Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. I'd like to call the meeting to order. Mr. Clerk, would you please take roll call?
Dave Abdulla.
Here.
Bill Bazzi.
Here.
Robert Constant.
Here.
Lisa Hicks Clayton.
Here.
Denise Melonowski Maxwell.
Here.
Ray Muscat is absent. Tom Wenzel.
Here.
Madam Chair, we have a quorum.
Thank you. I'd like to ask Edward Jackson to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance tonight.
(Inaudible) to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Please be seated. Next, we have the agenda approval.
Madam Chair.
Councilwoman Hicks Clayton.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I move to approve the Order of Business April 24, 2018, with a change in item 9H to move it to 7B.
Support.
Go ahead, second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? The ayes have it. Next on the agenda is approval of the minutes. Minutes of the regular meeting of April 10, 2018.
Madam Chair.
Councilwoman Hicks Clayton.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I move to approve the minutes for April 10, 2018, regular meeting of Dearborn Heights City Council as presented.
(Inaudible). Presentations?
Yes.
All right, let's back up a minute. We're going to do the Human Resource Department, Savota Perry, presentation of milestone anniversary awards to the city employees.
Good evening, everyone. It's a full house tonight because we have some celebrations. This is a very fun week in the city because this is the week that we get to celebrate our employees. So, as the Human Resource Director, as a resident, as part of this administration team, I like to practice what we preach, and that is, say "thank you." And so, tonight, we want to say thank you to all of our employees, and we especially want to recognize those of them that are celebrating five, 10, 15, and lots more years of service here. So, many of them have their families here for them as well, and so, thank you for giving us some of your best years of service here in the city, and we wish you nothing but the best as you continue your service to the city. And on behalf of all the residents, we thank you, and we look forward to working with you in the future. And as everyone knows, we're always searching for good people that are committed, long-term commitments. We have some people that are almost at 40 years of service, so come on aboard. We've got 40 years of work we have for you. So, what I'm going to do is call everyone up. If you keep your spot here, we're going to have Mr. Amkrapf take a photo of you once we get everyone together, and then we can hold applause maybe to the end. It might be a little easier, and it's getting kind of warm in the office. And then, if, you know, family members want to kind of come around and take pictures, feel free. So, I will start. First person celebrating five years of employment with the city is Ronald Cavell. He's with the Fire Department. There he is.[253.18][253.18](Applause).
Stay with us up here.
Yeah, if you want to stay right there, just kind of line him up. Joshua Erickson is also celebrating five years. I don't see Joshua, but he is celebrating five years of employment. We'll make sure he gets it. Valentine Peppers from the Dispatch, she's probably on duty right now, is celebrating five years with the city. Casey Workman is celebrating five years with the city. David Jackson from the Department of Public Works is celebrating five years. Julie Weekly from the Treasurer's Office is celebrating five years of employment. Kevin Beister is celebrating five years of it. It's taken me five years to get it right. I'm sorry, Kevin. Catherine Shaw from the Court is celebrating five years. Gary Spiz is celebrating five years with the Fire Department. Erin Stana Moore is celebrating five years with the Fire Department.[314.62][314.62](Applause). Angela Smith with the Court is celebrating five years of employment. Shelley Rainey, again, with the Dispatch, is celebrating five years with the Police Department. Scott Smith with the Fire Department is celebrating five years. I'm going to skip the 10-year because I don't see him, and I know he's coming from across the street. Robert Redd is celebrating 15 years with the Dispatch. Michelle Payne, who is here, is celebrating 20 years.[352.03][352.03](Applause). You got it. Michelle was one of the first people that I worked with. We shared a lot of laughs. I cannot believe it's been 20 years. So, congratulations. Jennifer, or Nicole Mitchell, as we call her, from the Court is celebrating 20 years of employment. Liam O'Donoghue is celebrating 20 years of employment with the Court. Jeffrey Ludwig is celebrating 20 years of employment with the Fire Department. Bill DeShroon from the Department of Public Works is celebrating 20 years of employment. With, yeah, I said the Department of Public Works. Daniel Root is celebrating 20 years with the Fire Department. Paul Erickson is celebrating 20 years with the Police Department. Mark Myers is celebrating 20 years with the Police Department. Marco Dion is celebrating 20 years with the Fire Department. Matthew Paul, who works in the Comptroller's Office, is celebrating 25 years of employment. Sherry Winnie is celebrating 25 years of employment with the Department of Public Works. This is where she's at. And then, if I could have John Rowley step to the stage real quick. He's here. Because I know this one's important to him.
(Inaudible).
Wait, it's not him. Not him. It's his right-hand person. Colleen Garcia is celebrating 25 years with the department.[436.12][436.12](Applause). James Stevens is celebrating 25 years with the Fire Department. Gina Peestrack is celebrating 30 years with the Department of Public Works. And I know she's got a group here tonight. Kimberly Constant is celebrating 30 years.[458.43][458.43](Applause). Let's run one. There was suchies. We have them out of order. And for our viewers who don't know Kim, she works in the Recreation Department as the Deputy Recreation Director. (Inaudible). Richard Suchi from the Police Department is celebrating 30 years with the department. And next month, he's going to be celebrating his retirement. And it's been 30 years of full-fledged dedication.[513.41][513.41](Applause). Celebrating 35 years, almost 36, is Lee Gavin, our Police Chief.[523.54][523.54](Applause).
Great job. Great job.
Stand up there and get a picture.
Donald Sapansky is celebrating 40 years of employment with the city. And then, our 10-year employee just walked in, and it's Mr. James Moore, who's our famous librarian from, every toddler loves him, at 10 o'clock in the morning on a Thursday. So, 10 years with the city. And if you add it all up together, you get 520 years of dedicated service from fine individuals. And thank you. Nothing's going to fail you. Jim?
The City of Dearborn Heights is a service organization, and what makes it run is these employees. Thank you for all of our residents, the great job you have done through all your years of service, and will continue. So, we're very proud of all of our employees, and thank you so much.
Yes.[602.82][602.82](Applause).
I was going to jump up and say it. Justin Donald, lady.
Okay.
Okay, we'll move forward. We started with the approval of the minutes. We had a motion, and we had a second, so we'll take a vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? The ayes have it. Next, we have is public transfers and current claims. Madam Chair? Councilwoman Hicks?
I'm sorry. We got comment, yeah, comment on agenda items.
Okay, yes. At this point, we will take comment on the agenda items. Step up to the podiums. State your name, address, and limit it to two minutes, please. Anyone?
Yeah, there's Susan.
Susan?
This is regarding 9A on tonight's agenda. It's regarding the Mayor's Letter of Veto regarding the motion 18138, which was passed by this Counsel on April 10. The Mayor's Letter of Veto does not cite the specific guidelines, regulations, rules from the generally accepted government accounting principles and practices, or from the State of Michigan Budgetary Act regarding motion 18138. His reasons are general and vague. The Mayor describes this resolution as a slush fund. We, the citizens of Dearborn Heights, pay outrageous water bills that keep getting higher and higher. Things like auto parts, oil, gasoline, tires, et cetera, for the entire city are paid out of the water fund instead of being taken from the budget of the particular department needing them. In addition, the water fund has been tapped in past years to get the city out of the red during the last few months of the financial year because the budgeted funds fall short. I wonder if this year will be another one of those years. The Mayor states that this resolution lacks transparency. Really? This coming from a mayor who holds close meetings to wheel and deal behind the taxpayers' back. Prime examples are the Warren Valley Golf Course and the 9/11 debacle, to name just two. The Mayor also states numerous Counsel members did not receive this resolution. However, there was only one member of the Counsel at the April 10 meeting who stated he did not receive this resolution, and that was because he was on vacation. The Mayor states that no copies were submitted to the public. The Mayor has never, has never, I'm sorry, the Mayor has the nerve to point this out when his own secret dealings are never made public until after he has had his way. Four, the Mayor states as a taxpayer, he sees no reason why this resolution is needed. As a taxpayer, I question why the Mayor is receiving his pension and salary at the same time. As a taxpayer, I question who changed the TPOAM Union's original contract to something different for a Counsel's approval. As a taxpayer, I question where the 3.2 million went that was illegally taxed, noted by Plant Moran from Dearborn Heights residents for the Heinz Park CSO.
Okay, thank you.
In closing, oh.
Okay, go ahead. If it's going to be real quick.
As a taxpayer, I support this resolution because the Counsel, as my representatives, need the additional funds to represent me and other taxpayers when dealing with all these close meetings that are called by the Mayor. The Mayor appointed Gary Miyake, and he serves at the pleasure of the Mayor, not the Counsel.
Okay, we're over time. I'm sorry. Thank you very much. Anyone else? Okay, at this time, we'll move on to the next item on the agenda. We have fund transfers and current claims. Madam Chair? Councilwoman Hicks Clayton?
Move to approve fund transfers and current claims, 6-1 through 6-20, as submitted.
Submitted by Councilman Bazey. Any discussion?
Madam Chair? Bill is first.
Councilman Bazey?
Yeah. My question's going to be back to the same, but what I'm going to do is, I'm not going to discuss it any further. I'm just going to reject all of them when we do vote.
What are they?
6-12.
6-12.
I'm not going to go back and remove it, but I will be voting against all of, everything in six. And the reason why, for the next meeting, what I'd like to see is, I mean, from my understanding from previous Counsel members before us, this has been discussed many, many times, and I have not seen anything since I've been on the Counsel to show who the violators, who's illegally dumping grease in sewer. And so, for the next meeting, before I approve any of these, I want to see something, some type of picture, before and after, just to make sure who's there. I mean, we have budget for a person to be monitoring this, but I haven't, I have not seen anything come in front of that Counsel to show us what was done. We're spending almost $40,000, $30,000 to $40,000 every month on cleaning sewers, and I don't know why.
Any other discussion? Councilwoman Abdulla, you were next.
Yeah. Will you speak? We got safety.
I just had to follow up, if I may. Because I was going to ask a question about 6-12 because it was discussed at April 10 meeting. Do we have any follow-up at the request to have those companies, the company doing the service, to do the photos before and after? Has there been any progress made in that respect?
Counselor? Each time they clean them, they are cleaned completely. I mean, we do video, we can do video afterwards, if that would satisfy you?
Yes.
Before and after?
Before and after would be great, because if they don't completely clean it, it clogs up twice as quick the next time.
I can provide you with, there's probably 16 locations where we do have issues. That information has been passed on to the Ordinance Department so that they can scrutinize these areas a little better since our last meeting. Get them a copy, too. I will.
Great. Councilman Abdulla?
Only I'd like to add on that, just in all fairness to the Department, I mean, I understand where Councilman Bazey's coming from, but at the same time, that's why we have Department Heads to watch these types of things, and I'd like to presume that Director Bill Zimmer is much more of an expert than we could be on this. So, the only thing we do is we authorize the funds, but it would be up to him, based on us having him in our department, watching these types of things, and this is where his specialty comes in. This wouldn't be, actually, for me personally, this wouldn't be my specialty. So, there has to be some sort of, you know, allowing him to do his job type of deal on that. I'm just giving my opinion on this. I know, but I mean, if we're going to sit and micromanage every single sewer that happens, that's just not realistic. It's not a part of our job as a Counsel. We're more on the budget end than to sit and watch, you know, get a copy of every sewer or readdus of every sewer that was cleaned up. If he's not doing his job, then obviously, we could have a different person do his job. But we know he's doing his job, so I just think that's something that should be left to him, and maybe the Mayor, Mayor's Department to watch over that. That's just my opinion.
Okay, I hate to keep going back to my military experience, but we've had the technology back in 1950 that we can fly Mach 3, and we can take a picture of a license plate at 60,000 feet. I just, I see, it's hard to believe that we don't know who the violators. I mean, the reason why I'm voting no for this, we need to know who the violators who's dumping grease. I'm not questioning any department. You guys are doing a great job. That wasn't my intention to question anybody. I just questioned who's dumping, illegally dumping grease in these sewers. And we have to, I mean, I don't know if they're dumping grease, what else are they dumping? So, we just got to hold whoever's dumping illegally in those sewers to be accountable, and that's my intention.
Yeah, because it's costing us a lot of money.
If I can make one more comment, though. These sewers, there's a, did you get my email? I wonder if you did get my email?
Yes.
I had a brief explanation in there, very brief, but I'd be happy to elaborate. Sewers, including the residential sewers, all tie into the main sewer. So, this grease, if it's being applied to the drain, could be blocked down, down the road before that grease solidifies and becomes a problem. So, this is why, I mean, unless we had a camera that continually monitored, monitored all of the inlets to that sewer, we would never be able to find out where it was coming from, unless it was at the top of the sewer.
Madam Chair?
Yeah, I did contact a company, and they stated that they do have a camera that can go along the main route and then go up the individual little portions of it, and they can pretty much pinpoint where it comes from by doing that.
That's a lot of, some of the ways that we dispute sewer claims from residents that say, "Our sewer is plugged up. We'll run a camera up there and look at their lead and see that it's packed with roots."
Absolutely, yeah. Because somebody's costing us a lot of money by dumping grease down the sewer system.
Well, this is not, this is not something that's going to go away either. I mean, we have to maintain these sewers. We have 190 miles of sewers.
Oh, definitely that, yeah.
Oh, I mean, it's, we've been doing this for decades, and it's not something that's going to go away. We are required to do this.
Right, right. But, go ahead, Councilman.
I just want the public to know that Councilman Bazey is referring to a specific sewer line that continually, continuously is being cleaned in a certain area, and it's like a, like a $20,000 cost each time. It's not, they do it through the whole city, but this is a particular area that keeps causing us trouble. And then, like Director Zimmer said, they're going to try to narrow it down to where it's coming from, and that's what our concern is, why we keep doing it over and over.
Right, that's our concern. We're not the rest of them.
And the numbers that you're seeing on these invoices is a cumulative amount of all that had been done in that two-week period. As I said, we did hand over 16 problem locations to the Ordinance Department, and I think that with that information, they'll be able to, to address these issues a lot in a lot better manner.
Thank you.
Madam Chair? Councilman Constant, please?
Go ahead. I'll let Jay go first.
Okay, go ahead.
You know, we did go, we've been discussing this for a while. One of the things, and if you, if you actually Google sewer systems across the country, we're not the only city that's dealing with this. In fact, I just looked at something last week. Hammond, I think it was in Hammond, Indiana, they spend almost $100,000 a year doing the exact same thing that we're doing. The, one of the things that's difficult is, as Bill said, there's so many interceptors that are going into these lines. If all of our grease and waste left our individual houses, pegged Jack's waste, and we saw that mine was the one that caused the clog because it was identified as coming from my house, this would be real simple. So, one of my, my understanding of the grease inspector, and I hope there's not a misconception that he's crawling around looking at grease traps, when he first goes out to the business, because we, we have this conception, I think, that the businesses are causing most of the problems. And in some of these maps that Bill provided to me, there's one business, and then maybe 22 homes that are along that same, same area. So, Bill and I have been talking a lot about doing education, getting some information out again. And if I remember, before I even worked for the city and I was coming to the Counsel meetings, this was something that we've been talking about like even 10 years ago. So, a lot of this stuff we have to do, if we don't do it, we're going to have houses backing up, absolutely no doubt about it. So, with the list that we have now, where we've been able to pinpoint it down to specific areas that we have to do on a more regular basis, I think we're going to see some, some resolution to this. And I think at the last meeting, we also said that hopefully, we wanted to put a presentation together to you, and we were hoping to do that at the last meeting in May, so.
Okay. Councilman Constant?
Yeah, just after what everybody said, I mean, we've been making a lot of progress. It started with Jack Mavintire, with Councilman Muscat. We passed the ordinance. We have the grease inspector. I don't know about the specific mechanics of this company. Bill, is this company any more or any less, and is there a lot of companies that do this type of work, not a lot of companies that?
It's the exact same process. Exact same process, exact same equipment. If you'll recall, on the email that I did send out, I listed some of the equipment that we do have, and it's comparable to any of the communities around of it. Some of the, some of the surrounding communities do a lot of this stuff in-house, so you're not going to see a, an invoice like this on their claims, but some of the cities around us have, say, 18 people that are assigned to their, their sewer system, their sewer department alone. I mean, we can't commit our entire department to the sewers alone.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions?
Can you tell us where this area is at? Specifically, this one area that keeps getting cleaned?
There's 16 of them.
16 different areas, okay. So, it's not just one area?
I can share that.
Okay.
Thank you. Councilman Abdulla?
I just had a question for either Controller Linda Vance or Elizabeth Perry in regards to item number 614. There's a $27,500 amount on professional contractual services. Just question, is that a part of the budget, or is that a separate new item that just came up? And I know you took it from the general fund. This would be the Health and Welfare Benefit Consulting Services.
Yeah, it's Plant Moran, so that's been the same consulting group that we've used for years now.
My concern was the amount budgeted before payment was not on there, so that's why I was wondering if this was something new. I'm not sure for Linda.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Just accidental?
Yeah, we must have accidentally not put that on there.
Okay, no, thank you.
It's definitely budgeted for.
Yeah, the only reason I need, you know, it's needed because then it gives us an idea of, you know, how much is being used.
(Inaudible) my guess, could I go through a look at it? That's, I can try to check it out again. That's good for us.
Okay, no problem. Thank you.
Any other questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed?
No.
Councilman Bazey is opposed. Next item on the agenda is consideration of bids from Park and Recreation Director Constant at first advertised for bids for two True Reach End Freezers, one for Eaton and one for Berwin Center. Madam Chair? Councilwoman Hicks Clayton?
Move to concur with Parks and Recreation Deputy Director Kim Constant and authorize the Controller to advertise for bids for the two True Reach End Freezers per attached specifications as outlined in 7A.
Support.
Supported by Councilman Abdulla. Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The ayes have it. Next on the agenda, from Public Service Administrator Zimmer, award of bid Annapolis Avenue Water Main Improvements. Williams and Polk Avenue. This one, 9H.
Oh, it's one that was 9H, okay. That's one that was moved over.
That was moved from 9H to 7B. Because it was in the wrong area.
Madam Chair? Councilwoman Hicks Clayton? Thank you, Madam Chair. Move to concur with Public Service Administrator William Zimmer and approve and award the contract to, it looks like it's, let me read it exactly. It's for Annapolis Avenue Water Main Improvement for William Avenue to Polk, and it's going to DND Water and Sewer from Canton, Michigan. The amount is $489,326, and establish a construction engineering budget for weight trim in the amount of $60,000. The project is funded jointly through Community Development Block Grant Program for $250,000, and the 2017-18 Water and Sewer Fund for the remaining balance of $299,326, and request approval for the Mayor and Clerk to sign the contract agreement as outlined in 7B.
Support.
Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The ayes have it. Next, we have reports from city officials. Clerk Pershevitz, Mayor of Veto of City Council Expenditures Fund Resolution adopted April 10, 2018. No discussion?
Madam Chair?
Councilman Constant?
I move that we receive note and file the communication from our Clerk Walter Pershevitz regarding the Mayor of Veto of City Council
Persovich regarding the mayor veto of City Council Expenditure Fund Resolution as outlined in 9A.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed?
No.
As, Councilman Bazey's opposed.
Yeah, Madam Chair, I'd like to vote no as well. Because, yeah, received note and files it in action, man. Madam Chair.
Councilwoman?
I'd vote no also.
Councilwoman Hicks Clayton and Councilman Wenzel. Next on the agenda is from Treasurer Riley, Investment of Funds Report of March 31st, 2018.
Madam Chair?
Councilwoman Hicks Clayton?
Thank you. Madam Chair, I move to receive note and file the Investment of Funds Report, March 31st, 2018, as submitted in 9B.
Any discussion? Those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The ayes have it. All right, we have next Administrative Assistant Lazlo, Justice Center Telephone Software Upgrade.
Madam Chair?
Councilman Abdullah?
My, I move that we concur with Christina Lazlo, the mayor's, from the mayor's office, that was budgeted for the cost of the phones and cables at each center. This would be the Berwin Center, I'm sorry, the Eaton Center and the Richard A. Young Center, but not for the software to install at the Justice Center to upgrade. Therefore, she had asked Mary Stegner with RMS Associates to provide a quote from Suntel for the upgrade at the Justice Center to allow all buildings to be connected. She would ask that the city council approve Suntel to perform the work necessary to connect the Eaton and Richard A. Young Center phone systems and pay the attached invoice upon successful completion of the project.
Any discussion?
Madam Chair?
Councilman Abdullah?
I don't believe Christina's here. There she is, okay.
I'm going to the microphone.
Just got a question, Christina, and I'm not sure unless it was already a part of this curiosity, the third center, Berwin Center, is that, was that already a part of it, or?
Berwin was already a part of it.
Okay, so that's why it's not.
All the city buildings besides those two, because they were really far away.
Okay, but Berwin was already a part of it. Okay, no problem, thank you.
Any other discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The ayes have it. Next, we have Administrative Assistant Lazlo, 123.net Metro Act Permit Application.
Madam Chair?
Councilman Abdullah?
I move that we concur with Mayor's Assistant Christina Lazlo for the attached permit, Metro Act Permit for 123.net. This is a standard application that also includes a check for $500 for the application fee, and was reviewed by Assistant Corporation Counsel Neil Ladel. And this is to authorize the clerk and the mayor to sign this document, and the city to accept the check in an amount of $500.
Support.
Any discussion?
Madam Chair?
Councilwoman Hicks Clayton?
Just for the, the public knowledge, and the information starts at page four, is there anybody from 123.net here to answer this, to share the scope of the work, in particular the timeline and the impact, if any, on the neighborhood, since this is through, it looks like from Inkster to Kenlock along Doc Stater?
They're not required to be here. This is, this is something that, it's, it's by the Metro Act, your body doesn't have to approve it, the mayor doesn't have to sign it, and they're gonna do it anyway, so. No, there shouldn't be any residential impact, because they're gonna go right on the wire for that part, but just how the, the State Franchise Act, when, when they came through and did that, there's no more local control.
Do you know when they're gonna start and when they're gonna finish? I know it says here.
They already have the permits with the building department, so I think they're pretty much, they want, they wanted a phone call as soon as we were on.
This is about two weeks, so, and you don't think it will interrupt the neighborhood or anything? It's for the residents, they'll be, okay.
They're gonna attach to the pole just like when other providers attach to the pole, or Comcast comes down a street, most of them are COAX now, but it's, people are gonna see the trucks out there, but they're not gonna be tearing into loans and stuff.
All right, thank you.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
The ayes have it.
I'm aye. I had a paper cut.
I know, I saw that. You okay?
Yeah.
You're not gonna bleed on us, are you?
Next, we have Park and Recreation Director Grebel, the Spirit 2018 Festival Adult Beverage Supplier Recommendation.
Madam Chair?
Councilwoman Hicks Clayton?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I move to concur with Parks and Recreation Director Kenneth Grebel and award the Adult Beverage Supplier for the 2018 Spirit Festival to O N W Inc. as outlined in 9E.
Support.
Supported by Constant. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
No.
Councilman Abdullah is no. Next on the agenda is Police Chief Gavin Motorola Service Agreement.
Council Chair?
Councilman Abdullah?
I move that we concur with Police Chief Lee Gavin, and this is for a 12-month service agreement with Motorola that expired on February 28th, 2018, and this is for renewing the agreement for another year, which is essential for our police and fire dispatching services. And the police chief is requesting that we authorize Mayor Pallico to sign the Motorola Service Agreement for the period of March 1st, 2018 through March 28th, 2019, for the, for a cost of $59,565.60. And this will pay the agreement full, and there will be no quarterly billing.
Support.
Supported by Councilman Bazey. Any discussion?
Madam Chair?
Councilman Abdullah?
Just as a note, I emailed the chief, and he just mentioned that this is just $1,000 over last year, so, still a pretty good deal.
Any further discussion?
Yeah, Madam Chair.
Councilwoman Hicks Clayton?
Chief, correct me if I'm wrong, this is, Motorola's exclusive provider, so there's no, there wouldn't be bidding or anything like that, because it's exclusive, plus it's compatible with what we obviously have.
Our equipment is Motorola dispatch.
Our preps, along with the fire department's preps, we use Motorola, so it's a sole.
All right, thank you.
Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The ayes have it. Next, we have Police Chief Gavin, request for auction.
Madam Chair?
Councilman, Councilman?
I move that we concur with Police Chief Lee Gavin and authorize the auctioning off of the vehicles as outlined in 9B.
Second. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? The ayes have it. Next, we have Tifa Administrator Oliverio, 2017-2018 Budget Amendment.
Madam Chair?
Councilwoman Hicks Clayton?
Move to approve the Tax Increment Finance Authority 2017-2018 Budget Amendment as outlined in 9A.
Support.
Supported by Councilman Constant. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Thank you for the presentation we got.
Yes, thank you. All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? The ayes have it. Next, we have Tifa Administrator Oliverio, 2018-2019 Proposed Budget.
Madam Chair?
Councilman Abdullah?
I, I move that we approve the enclosed copy of Tifa's 2018-2019 Proposed Budget, which was approved at the Tifa Board's April 11th, 2018 meeting. Based on the meetings with the city assessors and city treasurer, Tifa's 2018 and 19 tax capture revenue is estimated at 1.925 million. The total budget is at $2,420,000, and pursuant to the Tifa Act, city council needs to approve this, this Tifa budget, as outlined in item 9J.
Supported by Councilman Bazey. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The ayes have it. Next, we have new business. Business License Renewal for Donovan, VFW Number 78 Ford Lanes Incorporated, Red Lobster Hospitality, and Walker Speakeasy.
Madam Chair?
Councilwoman Hicks Clayton?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Move to approve the business license renewals as outlined in 13A.
Support.
Supported by Councilman Constant. Any discussion?
Madam Chair, yes, Councilwoman? Thank you, Madam Chair. A quick question, because typically you mark, mark the boxes through the clerk's office, but I noticed the first application renewal, there is not anything marked. Are we all clear with this one?
We are. Just a note to the council people, we send these out when they're marked. Oftentimes, a organization will come in and not come in with their, so we print a copy, and we just didn't mark it a second time, but rest assured, we have a list on our wall, and we, we check obligations before we issue a license.
Thank you, sir.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? The ayes have it. Next, we have members of the public. We're looking for comments from council members right now. Councilman Constant?
Just want to remind everyone, we are having the annual U-Course Creek Cleanup on Saturday, May 5th, from 9:00 AM to noon. Usually, we get the honor society students. Tom Wenzel is selling, helping sell sponsorships for the Creek Cleanup. We just had the passing of Alfred Nason Sr., who was always there, helping people sign up when they came in for years and years, so we miss him. So that's Saturday, May 5th, from 9:00 to noon.
Okay, any other discussion? Okay, that's time we'll open, oh, go ahead, Councilman Bazey.
Couple things probably for Mr. McIntyre. One of them, got a couple calls on Kitch and Beach Daily. There's a business up, right there on the corner, it was a H O R embroidery.
Embroidery?
They keep putting their trash outside on the sidewalk, and if there's, any type of wind, it's blowing all that garbage all over the neighborhood, so the residents are concerned, how come nobody's holding them accountable? There's no trash. I took a picture of it.
No, I've seen it. I've actually talked to them already about it, and they're gonna be ordering cans.
Good, good.
The second one, well, actually, thank you so much for getting ahold of that resident that I keep complaining about, I won't mention the names, also the light.
Oh, I'm sure, I'm sure he called everybody to say that. We talked today, so, yeah.
Yeah, so we're concerned his wife has health issues, so we gotta try to resolve that one. She can't sleep, and the lights keep shining in her room.
We're, we're here for her life.
I live at her life. Let's talk.
Yeah.
Mr. McIntyre?
That's not right for now, is it?
Yeah, so Mr. McIntyre will take care of it, so I wanted to bring it up.
Yeah, talk with Mr. McIntyre in regards to that. All right, any other comments from the council members? At this point, we will open it for public announcements.
Oh, I'm sorry, did you hear?
It's okay.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I'll go first, real quick, and then you'll be set. I just want to make a brief announcement that former Police Chief Sam DePrima, who was our chief going back about 20 years ago, he passed away last weekend. There's gonna be a little memorial service this Saturday at Santo. We have a lot of employees here that have been around the city a long time, so Chief DePrima was with the city for 30 years, so, little service this Saturday at, at Santo. So I just wanted to express that to the council and to our members here that, that knew Chief DePrima back then. Thank you.
Thank you. I'm sorry, Councilman Abdullah has something.
Yeah, just want to put out a congratulations to our city different department heads, our mayor's department or administration, I'd say, a lot of the new development that's happening along Ford Road in the north and close between Inkster and John Daly. I just want to say some really, really nice stuff is going up there with the roasting plant, and a bunch of new businesses are being built up. And then recently, I noticed that Dearborn Fresh, which is a supermarket, it had started to build there, so congratulations to everybody that's involved with that, and I, I love this type of stuff, opening up our, in our city, and I love new businesses coming into our city. And side note on that, with the leasing of a couple of those properties, and this is an indication of where our city's going, which is in a good direction, I was handling the leasing on that, and I had many national brands inquiring, which did not used to happen before. We used to get just the mom and pops, the small, you know, mom and pop stores, so now we're getting national brands. As a matter of fact, Athletica, or not Athletica, the physical therapy place, I think it's called Athletica, that went in there, that's a national brand that had inquired about it and came in from another state, so that's, that's, that's a good indication of where our city's going, and I just wanted to congratulate everybody for that.
Yeah, I had a couple things. First of all, myself and several other council members had the pleasure of attending the fire ops program put on by our fire department over at, Lane County Community College over in Taylor, where they put us through drills, scenarios, fire, a house fire, a car fire, extracting a person from a vehicle, jaws of life, big cutting shears. It was a great experience. I'm still sore, it's been over a week, and want to thank all, everyone involved in the fire department, and to go through this and see what, it's just a small thing that they go through, and we really appreciate, and we cannot imagine everything that these firefighters go through on a daily basis. One of the things is, you know, when they go through a house fire or something, they take out all the hoses, they just don't go back to the fire station. They go back, they take the hose, they clean the hoses, they dry them out, they restock the truck, and hopefully they don't get a call right away, but they go, it's, it's more than sitting around playing cards for these guys.
Oh, yeah.
Their job is really important to the city, and we really appreciate the opportunity to go through this. And we also got, we got to wear the whole outfit with the tank on the back, and, and they were kind enough to give us our own fireman hat, and we got to, that we got to keep, so I, I wear it all the time, you know. But I really, I really enjoyed myself, I'm sure our council members did too. And also, the Southwest Dearborn Heights Neighborhood Association, it's having some issues right now as far as this staying together, and I want to encourage everyone from all parts of the city to get involved with these organizations in their area. It's very important. It, it's where you can voice your opinion, and it's, numbers speak volume, so the more you get involved with the city, the better off. If, if there's association in your neighborhood, get involved with a neighborhood watch, you know, contact the police department, just get involved with your city. It's good for your spirit, it's good for the city, and just good for everyone in general. Thank you.
Thank you. Clerk?
Yes, it's, it's nice to see so many people in attendance here. I see five of my poll workers here, I counted, I hope I didn't miss anybody, but I think you all know how special you are to me and to the city for working the elections time after time. And with that, I'm gonna put a plug out and say, please consider working the elections. We can always use help. Every election, we have some people who don't return for one reason or another, and we would welcome new people, so please consider that. I had the pleasure of being at the senior luncheon earlier, was it this week or last week? And Mr. Barkoff, I don't have the pleasure of knowing you, but congratulations on your award, so, so good of you to do so much for the city, and hello to Councilman Kosinski.
Yes.
Any other announcements?
Now we get a radio announcer. We get the real deal.
This is always the best part.
Hello, Council Chair and Mayor. Just wanted to talk about a couple of quick items at the library. First off, Tuesday, May 1st, at 7:00 PM at Carolyn Kennedy Library, we will be hosting a program on perennial gardening. A garden expert from English Gardens will show favorite perennials to help create a long blooming landscape, so spring is here, time to get it in gear. Also, thanks to the Friends for another successful book sale. The Friends raised over $3,000 for the library. Much of this will go towards cabinetry in the adult program room, and new cushion program chairs and rack at JFK. That's all for now. Thanks for your time, and see you at the library.
Thank you. And you still have more comment from the, I'm sorry, bouncing.
I'd just like to find out, what's the status on Kentfield Center? I haven't seen any work being done over there, so are we, do I have a contract or have any rental agreement?
You can address to me, or to?
Will you address me?
I mean, anybody.
Or Mr. Miyaki?
Sure. I think, actually, you've been kind of informed of some of this, at least some of the members of the council have been, and we are still in the midst of negotiations. And we have a number of items that are, they need to end up being worked through because they are different than what was in the established contract that was in the RFP package. So, that wasn't anticipated, but Parks and Recreation Director Gribble and I have spoken today. We will probably speak again tomorrow, and then I will, once again, talk to Mr. Mackey's attorney, or communicate with him by virtue of an email, saying where we think we can go with these items. But like I said, originally, we were looking at four items to be determined, and by virtue of what was raised by the other side, there were 15 items that I counted that were not expected to even be on the table, and we've had to negotiate with respect to those items.
Okay, yeah, we're just excited to get it working and started.
Sure. And if anyone has any questions outside the council meeting, they should feel free to end up giving me a call, or sending me an email, and I've responded to all of those.
On that item, or similar item, with the Warren Valley Golf Course, what's the status on that?
The Public Services Committee today approved the assignment agreement. The full commission is supposed to take up the assignment agreement on Thursday. I will be attending that meeting. I do not expect that there will be a problem.
We've had discussions with Mr. Gary Warrenchuck, the chairperson of the commission. What kind of bumped us off the path is that the county announced this jail proposal with Gilbert. So, the last two commission meetings, they've kind of knocked all the other stuff off the agenda. And so, it's good news that we're on, and I asked Gary earlier, and, correct me if I'm wrong, but you thought about 30 days after this, a liquor license can get transferred? So, we're probably about...
We should be able to close around that time. What we'll be doing is getting a conditional license from the county, or from the LCC, and then we should close with the county, and then we can actually operate at that point.
Perfect, perfect.
Thank you.
Any other announcements from the table?
Just a quick question, follow up on that. Do we plan on keeping the same operating company that's doing it now, or is it...
For the time being, yes, we would be.
Public comments?
I'm Lawrence Lama, I live on Virgil Street. Last couple of weeks ago, you know, you drive around neighborhood, you don't notice things, and then all of a sudden, I see this big three-story steel structure. It's a billboard went up on Joy Road Telegraph. It's on, right next to Walgreens. Is there ordinance about the size of signs for the city? Because it really cheapens the look of the city when you have this thing up in the sky.
Yeah, I don't like billboards, but...
It's three stories tall.
Yeah. I think this one...
Was it zoning for it?
Was that the one in the litigation?
It's at Cabob Inn property, the second lot next to Walgreens.
Yeah, I'll let the attorney talk, but it was as a result of the owner taking us to court, right?
And I really was not the one who ended up defending that matter, so, but basically there was a settlement, and that's why we have that.
But it was the owner of this, for clarification, it was the owner of the sign company, not the spot that's located.
Right.
But is there an ordinance about the size of signs we can have in the city? This ridiculous it's going to look.
Well, go ahead, I'll let Gary go.
Unfortunately, I'm not fully aware of all of, because I wasn't involved in the actual litigation, but I'm under the impression that we would not have ended up entering into a resolution if we did not have a choice but to end up doing so, I'm sorry to say.
Because the work is continuing on, there's always, every day I look at it, something else is added on to it, so.
Councilman Kosinski?
Cheapens the look.
Every city has ordinance is on billboards. It's a hotly litigated item. There's been a recent U.S. Supreme Court decision on them. I've been involved in litigation with other cities. There's no right to have a billboard up, but I remember, as our city attorney Gary Miyaki said, this was a result of litigation. He said, no, he's going to, you know, get the billboard. Those billboards, especially the digital ones, they make some money.
Yeah, well, I don't care if they make money, but it looks cheap, and it's three stories tall.
Well, there was one on Telegraph near Van Boren in the south end, it was, for a long time, advertising an adult business. A lot of us found...
I don't know what they're going to advertise, but the people in my neighborhood don't like it at all.
I got a question. Does anybody, any of the directors know, like ordinance they're building, what the requirements are for a billboard in our city?
Because all the other cities are making their signs smaller, you know.
We do have an ordinance in place, and billboards are not allowed in the city. This is a special case that went to court, it was transferring from one location to another, and we had a court order to allow to go in there with the specifications that they are building with.
Oh, so they had the size and everything in that court order? Okay, gotcha.
Didn't they fight it based on freedom of information, if I'm not mistaken?
That's what it says. What it says is a freedom of speech, but not...
Freedom of speech, I'm sorry.
Man of the chair?
Councilman Wensel?
I was on the planning commission when this gentleman approached us and applied for relocation of these billboards. And because of our ordinance, we refused it, and he was upset about it, and he took it to court, and it was out of our hands at that point. As a city, we refuse these billboards to be relocated or any new ones put up. The billboards, I think, he's allowed to put two of them up now, or is it three?
I think one from the south end by Southfield.
Southfield Road, yeah, no one's located there.
So, the city denied him. He took it to court, I don't know what level of court it was in, but the judgment was in his favor to give him two locations to relocate. They're not new billboards, they're existing billboards that he's relocating, so, that's what happened.
Okay, well, thank you very much for the information, I appreciate it. Any other public comments? Please step up to the microphone, state your name, address, and limit it to three minutes.
I might ask your permission if I go over the three minutes.
How may?
I might ask for your permission if I go over the three minutes.
Okay.
You can say no if you want. Good evening, Zuhair Abdha. First, I want to thank Councilman Bill Bazey. I have been attending this city council for many, many years, and I see the same amount for nagel construction between 19,000 to 22,000, every, almost every city council, which means we spend in around 40,000 a month, close to $400,000 a year. I called a couple city council members in Dearborn, and I asked them if they have the same problem. They said, we recommend that your city talk to the people at the DPW in Dearborn, they might have more experience about this subject than us. I believe the city council has every right to question where the money is spent, because this is the main job you have sitting there. That's about that subject. Second one, I have went through the proposed budget for next year, and I saw who got what. It bothers me to see the small employees, forgive me for using the word, if I did, getting 1% after a year and a half of negotiation. And I did little calculation, we spent more money on the lawyer's fees during the year and a half, more than what we gave those people who are under contract in unions. I would recommend to the city council, the people who gave up between 6% to 10%, there is no problem if they get it back, since we have, according to our budget, 6 to 7 million dollars of surplus. I believe those people deserve to get it, but on the other hand, we deserve as public to have five days' work, and to have little relief for the money we gave on the adly override. As you give the employees what they gave up, we are like them exactly. We gave up more money for taxes, and they gave up some of their salaries. I would like to see the city council to look at all these increases and go by what's fair, who's doing his job, based on reviews on, you know, every year, there should be a review by the bosses for these people and recommend 1%, 10%, 15%, whatever it is. Based on their review, they should get that money, not based on anything else. I would have loved to see those increases came before the election last year, I wouldn't have any problem with it. But it bothers me to see them after the election, and some of them getting 32%, 33%. That isn't right. Some people getting 4%, and I do applaud Mr., whatever, the director of the library. He asked for 4% for all his employees. I wish everybody will do the same. And it is in your hands, really, to watch all these raises, because it has to be fair across the board. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Anyone else from...
If I may make one comment, Dearborn is not a good community to compare us, because we have separated sewers, Dearborn has a combined sewer, and it's not the same.
State your name, address, and limit it to three minutes.
Okay. Jennifer Niner, 26550 Woodshire Street. I just wanted to address a neighbor that we've had issues with probably for about 18 years. I've had deaf parents, I've probably had this inspector, this poor building inspector to my house, I don't even know how many times, we put cameras up about 10 years ago, because my parents are deaf, and he was threatening them. I don't feel like calling the cops every time. I'm a public educator for 12 years, so I'm not going to call the cops if there's nothing, I'm not going to call them out every time there's a feud, but when he's cussing at my mom, my mom can't even go outside, me and my husband aren't home. And it's getting to the point where now he's harassing the neighbor, and she feels very threatened and scared, where she's gone to the police station, and they've told her that she should maybe think about moving. We've all lived here for 18 years. Actually, I've lived there for, I'm going to be 40 next month, so I've lived there for 40 years, and I've never had this issue, and it's...
Three of the neighbors have a PPO.
When my mom can't go outside of her own house, there's a problem.
Okay, your name and your address?
Michael Robish. I'm the brother or the sister at the residence where the light issue is, and the light was put up for safety and security, for her safety and well-being. It's not a spotlight, it's a security light that was replaced on the side door, because there's been several instances and things that have gone on there, and it was for her protection that we had installed the light. It wasn't for any type of shining in a window. The windows itself are all blacked out, and it's just constant, constant, over 18 years. My father was alive, and my mother was alive, there's been several reports and constant calling of the police. We've tried to get along with this neighbor, but there's just absolutely no coming to common ground. The light issue is there for her safety. It's not there for harassment, it is a security light, not a spotlight. There's a couple spotlights that are on his house, and when driving over at night, they're actually directed out into the roadway, and they're very blight, bright and blinding. It's like a game, and I don't, you know, she doesn't want to go to the point, she's just very, very scared for it there, and that's the one reason why the light was put up. Would like not to have to put it there, but again, it's for her well-being.
Okay, state your name and your address, please.
Hi, Sal Olangi, 26530 Woodshire. I have a complaint with the same neighbor. He's constantly giving the middle finger to my elderly mother, who's 91 years old. He has mooned my mother a number of times. He's entered our yard over two dozen times, been peeking through our windows, and the garage window, and the house window. He's, in just the past month, he's come across the street, stood in front of the sidewalk in the middle of my house, just standing like this. He's got his video camera out, going all around my truck, and all around the side of my house. He's gone in several neighbors' yards. He tells the neighbors he's looking for rats. He's brought other people's trash cans back in the yard after the trash had been emptied, and then remained in their yard, taking pictures of other people's yards from those yards that he was entering. So, he's just a real problem for the neighborhood, and I don't know what we can do about him, but, again, we're calling the police a number of times, but, you know, I don't know how many times the police can keep responding for this person.
Man of the chair?
Councilman Kosinski?
This issue come up years ago, I remember, and we have an ordinance about, you can have so many luminums and...
If I may, there are two different issues. One of them is the, is the light issue, one of them is the neighbor issue. We always have to be careful in terms of neighbor issues, because we're only hearing from one side. On the other hand, my sense would be if we've got someone who has several PPOs against him, then reports should end up being made to the police department. If they meet an appropriate threshold, then they'll be submitted to me for a warrant request. That doesn't necessarily mean that a warrant will end up being granted or issued, but it will potentially end up curbing some of the behavior. I think I know who you're referring to, and it may be necessary to do something, but you should probably after the meeting, speak to the police chief with respect to this, and then maybe the police chief and I can discuss possible options with respect to this matter.
I got a call this morning, I was trying to walk out the door, I'm on the house phone, and the big, I tell you, he was very, very angry, and I just listened to him, said I need to go.
We talked about all the codes he was breaking right now, and us complaining all the time. Life's too short for me, like, I want to live it, so...
Well, like, as the city attorney said, so there's the...
I'm not going to complain on everything.
There's a process that needs to end up being followed, otherwise we potentially have a problem with just going after someone without investigating something appropriately. But I would encourage that to end up taking place.
Okay.
Thank you.
Well, thank you very much. Mr. McIntyre, would you like to comment?
I do. I do, because I'm the one that's dealing with this on a daily basis, and what I want to say to this is, I think, I think this is a real teachable moment for all of us, and I'll tell you why. Sometimes, you know, the expression is the squeaky wheel gets, you know, the most action, and in this case, I think this gentleman has been the squeaky wheel. These folks aren't the squeaky wheel. They've sat and they've dealt with it over and over and over again, for years, they've dealt with this kind of situation. So, if we could just take an opportunity to think about this for a second, from all these folks' perspective, they don't come, they don't call all the time, they don't show up at council meetings, they've tried to manage this on their own. There's a common denominator here with these folks, right? They've done things, as far as we can tell, the right way. Then you have an individual who has decided, and I mentioned this last week at a council meeting, that I have folks that I'm dealing with in the ordinance department that aren't satisfied with what I'm saying. In this particular individual's case, what I said to him from the first time that he came and spoke with me is, I have to see it in order for it to be a violation. I have to have documentation, and I have to witness it myself or see evidence of it in order for me to proceed further. I had been out there twice, I didn't see it. The police department had gotten called out on this same issue, they did not see it. But yet, other people are saying that they are seeing it, but the whole time, I feel like these people weren't being listened to, who have to deal with it day after day and live in this situation. So, I'm asking, going forward, and I think Councilman Abdullah mentioned something earlier, sometimes I get the impression that because a phone call is made to someone higher than me, or in a different capacity than me, there's an impression that I get when I get a phone call, that I'm not doing my job, and I'm not responding to this. We have to look at the whole situation. I told the person that came in complaining about the light, that I'm not going to just go based on what he's telling me, that I have to see this for myself. And yet, I got many phone calls from people that said they saw it, and apparently, they saw it a different way that I didn't see it. I'm in charge of this, it's my job to decide if there's a violation occurring, and I have to go based on our ordinance. I have to see it, I have to follow up with it, and that's what I told him even today, was, there's more investigation going on in this, that I want, I need to do some research on it. We've spent a lot of time on it, and I just want folks to know that it's okay to say to people, I trust that our ordinance director is handling this, and you're going to have to wait for his response on this. I just wanted to say that, so...
Thank you.
If I may, just to clarify something, I should, we need to be looking at both the ordinance end of things, and we also need to be looking at the criminal end of things. People don't moon people in the city without there being some ramifications, so...
Okay. Your name and your address, please, in three minutes.
My name's Russell Niner, 26550 Woodshire Street. First off, thank you, building, building guy. I know we never met, but I know you got to deal with a lot. So, our biggest issue with this guy is, you know, like Saturday, he was egging on a guy he had a PPO order on. Egging him on to come over and fight. I go over there and say, dude, just leave everybody alone. We don't care what you have in your yard, we don't care, whatever you want to do, just live your life, leave everybody alone, get out of everybody's house. But yet, he wants to egg people on. And he's like, keep on coming, keep coming over, keep coming over, so. And then he tries to say, I'm going to call the cops for trespassing on me. Well, you invited me over to your yard. I'm just trying to offer you peace. I'm just trying to offer you peace. You know, I know a lot of people in our neighborhood have gotten tired of it, and we have just tried to say, you know, you're not hurting anybody with this light or these cameras. But he wants to put brighter lights up. He wants to do cameras. He wants to set off his car alarm and leave the house for hours at a time.
Dog whistle.
Blow the dog whistles constantly, so all the dogs start going crazy. Just a lot of stuff. And we've always tried to just, whatever, okay. And but, you know, the whole deal with the light is brought new light. I mean, because we, you know, like, we know, like, his chimney is one foot or like a what? Two feet too short from building code that we know of, that we've done that. He's, I mean, he's constantly making water running into this lady's basement, because he just runs his gutter downspout right into the driveway, right into their driveway. The inspectors come out. He takes it off. You guys say, okay. And then he puts it back. You know, this is just the games he plays with everybody.
Could it be possibly a civil issue that you could take another direction?
Well, we did get the PPO order dropped.
Yeah, we got the PPO order dropped.
We went downtown.
No, we all went downtown, stood up for our neighbor, because we just looked at it and said, this is it. You know, we can't let everybody else suffer because of this. You know, he's just defending his parents. So we just, and that's why I finally just said, you know, I usually try to stay out of stuff, because I just, I just believe in being a good neighbor. I, you know, he hurt his arm. I'm shoveling his snow for him. You know, but he wants to complain whenever, when I was taking care of it, because she broke her foot. So I was taking care of her snow. But he wants to complain about it. He wants to do this. He wants to put, he wants to put a four-foot pile of snow right in front of her driveway. So I come over, clean it up. He wants to put it back. So I go over, clean it up. And then he's threatening...
Have you thought of videotaping these?
We have this all, I mean, we have cameras in our house, because like I said, my grandma put them up, because she was worried about her deaf son, who is grown. I mean, we have, I mean, yes, it just seems like it's just, it's never-ending. Like, no matter what we have or what we do, like, it just doesn't, I just want it to stop. I want my mom to be able to go in her front yard and be able to pick up leaves as she wants to.
Yeah, there's also an issue where the cameras, he's got security cameras that are pointed onto the property. He's told to move them. And they're pointing like right at the garage door, right at the driveway.
Well, in defense of that, he can do that, because once you step into the public, we all drive down Warren or wherever, and we're captured by several video cameras.
No, but wait. He puts them, he puts them...
These are lights that are mounted on the back of his house.
Oh, I thought he said cameras.
Capturing everything that he was back there.
Yes, and he made a comment to my mother that he can read the labels of a piece of fruit on her kitchen table.
Now, I know video cameras robo, and no, you can't do that with the type they have for the regular home ones.
And then the truth for going on for over 18 years, because my father would go out and work on the driveway.
We can provide pictures of all the stuff he's done.
Yeah, but no, don't let somebody tell you they can read that, because they can't. It's just intimidation.
No, he used to tell neighbors that he would sit in the bathroom, he would stand in the window, get a little pair of binoculars, and read their bills right off their kitchen table.
And that's one of the reasons why...
But that's how, well, how that house is set up and how it used to be.
All right, well, we'll let this, we'll let Director McIntyre and the police decide what they're going to do. I mean, at this point, there's nothing we...
I'm the police chief.
I just feel for everybody. Okay, any other comments? Suzanne, step up to the microphone. Name, address in three minutes.
Suzanne Todd, 411 Academy Street. For decades, the city of Dearborn Heights has leased the former Eaton Elementary School for a dollar a year to use as a senior citizen center, with the stipulation that all maintenance and repair be done at the discretion of the city of Dearborn Heights. For over six years now, the roof over the Eaton Center became more and more dilapidated to the point that in the fall of 2017, due to its many leaks, the ceiling in the only ADA bathroom in the facility fell and covered the floor, commode, and sink, and rendered it unusable. Thank goodness no one was using this bathroom when the ceiling caved in. The new administration of school district number seven stepped in and paid with their own funds earmarked for our schools and had the roof of the Eaton Center replaced, so South Dearborn Heights seniors have a safe place for their activities. As of the last Board of Education meeting held on April 11th, I learned that the city has not contributed a penny towards this roof because of that one little word discretion. I also learned there are other many critical issues at the Eaton Senior Center that need to be addressed. The city, by not taking partial responsibility for the Eaton Center roof, has taken money away from the children of D-7. The money this, the city is not paying back is affecting the safety and security of our D-7 children, as money is greatly needed to make our school buildings more secure and safe, so a repeat of Parkland, Columbine, and Sandy Hook massacres do not happen in our district. I can't help but feel that this is a way to, for the city to get out of having a South End Senior Center. By not paying the city's fair share, they can blame the school district for shutting it down, even if the reason is that only $1 a year can no longer maintain it. Or maybe by ignoring the problems, it'll eventually be condemned by his city inspectors, like the Canfield Center. Either way, our South End seniors will be forced to travel to the Berwin Center in North Dearborn Heights. I am requesting that the council of Dearborn Heights pass a resolution that will, that will help pay for the roof on the Eaton Center. Looking at this year's budget, it appears it is, the city is more committed to rewarding people with outrageous pay raises within the administration than keeping our senior citizens and children safe. D-7 cannot afford to take this on the city's responsibility for the Eaton Center. I would also just like to note that our D-7 teachers have been working for 10 years with no raises. So by not helping to pay for this roof is just egregious. Thank you.
Thank you.
That is so untruthful. I don't even know if I want to even comment on it, but...
Comment on it, because this came forward...
Okay, okay. Well, it's... Any other public comments?
Move to adjourn.
Move to adjourn. Second in.